Okay, thank you all for being here tonight. Our regular council meeting, City of Eastridge, March 9th, 2017. Good to see you today, everybody here. Sir, if you will, if you will, if you will come here and lead us in our dedication listening class. We appreciate it. Everyone, please stand.
Let us pray, please. Our heavenly Father, we come to you now, Lord, we thank you for the honor to be here tonight. Watch your every person on this board, Lord. And, Lord, we ask you now, watch your every one here, Father. For we have a touch of men and ladies on the battlefield, all of our officers and soldiers. Lord, we know, Lord, without you, we could do nothing. You've got all the power, Lord, bless our city. Watch over it, put your hand over it, lead in God's great name. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Our flag to the flag, please. Our flag to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, if we could have the roll call, please.
Mayor Langer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sewell.
Here.
Councilmember Cagle.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
City Manager Miller.
Here.
City Attorney.
Here.
Before we go any further, I'd like to say, thank you, Ms. Pauls, for standing in the gap tonight. We appreciate that very much. It's gonna be hard not to say, Janice, roll call, please. So if I slip, I apologize to the fans. All right. I trust everyone has had opportunity to review the consent agenda. The minutes for the February 20th call meeting, as well as the February 23rd Agenda Work Session and the regular council meeting on that same day. Do we have a motion in regard to these items? Motion approved. Got a motion in a second to approve. We can have the roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sewell.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Well, I want to approve the lay-in date of the call meeting from February 20th. President Warren, that now. Mr. Sewell. And then there's a party thrown in the... Ms. Matten, his communication, Wade was turned around and asked by the mayor in the... It was, I'm gonna stand, I'm going to call him.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Langer.
Yes. Okay. Okay, we have communication from citizens. If you are a resident or a business owner here at the City of Eastridge and have a comment, question, or concern you'd like to bring to the council, this would be your opportunity to do so. If you will come to one of the microphones here at the front, state your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes. And we did have one person sign in, so we're gonna have him first. Joyce Herzog, 2327 Estherbrook.
I'm Joyce Herzog. I'm on 4327 Estherbrook, just blocking halfway. Husband Tom and I moved to Chattanooga area on 90th and 2001. I'm sure you guys remember the date. And it was one of the best moments of my life, so I very much appreciate it. 2011, our health took a downturn and we ended up assisted living for two years. We couldn't afford to stay there, couldn't afford more than five years, and we were living in a dorm in Manhattan. When we got out, we bought a house, which also moved to Eastridge. Which is a block and a half away because we could get on wheelchair chairs. Anything we needed to go to, except our doctors, primary, and a big shopping place like Walmart or something like that. I wrongly assumed that Chattanooga provided transportation for seniors and elderly and handicapped people and that I would be able to participate with them. I had sent checks, including calling today here to the courthouse and saying, you know, is there such transportation available in Eastridge? I was rather appalled, you know. The answer was, I don't know, I'll have to check. Like, seriously? Eastridge doesn't know if they provide transportation to the handicapped? So I was told to call, um, Carter, I was told to call first. They also didn't know if they serve Eastridge. So then I listened to another person. They finally said, no, we don't serve Eastridge. So finally, I guess, had to finalize the answer that Eastridge has no services for handicapped and elderly transportation to places like doctor offices. I'm still driving, my husband hasn't driven in over almost five years. And what is not allowed to drive, he has, um, sleep at nap and other sleep... She's supposed to sleep in the wheel, so I'm getting in my wheel. I'm aging and my sight is not as good. I have Alzheimer's and other issues that are making it more difficult for me. I'm very concerned, what do I do? And what in the world, this is an aging community, we know that. My block is about eighty to ninety percent people my age or older. What are people doing? What have you done to plan for the future for us, those of us who need this? And if you don't have money, it was your plan. My husband suggested, because I was talking about this, my... His brother married a woman who was blind in Rochester, New York, because he was one of the private volunteer drivers for the blind, organized by his then-wife, husband, uh, who passed away a couple of weeks ago. But Irma was the blind calling person to get people to come and provide transportation for the blind. And he eventually married her and they had a good, you know, parents together. And something like that, just an organizer who could find people who would volunteer. We've had several emergency trips. Just two weeks ago, I had to go with Saadak to the emergency room. I drove myself. They wouldn't let me out of the hospital until I had a ride there in April. And we have served, I was a public school teacher for twenty-five years, homeschool teacher, speaker, author for twenty-five years. We have served, not here in Eastridge, but served the community of education and kids all of our lives. We have friends all over the world, but not in Eastridge. And I'm, I don't have somebody I can pick up the phone and say, come help me. So I'm not just asking for me. I'm asking for all of my neighbors and all of the people in Eastridge. Please form a plan.
Hannah, I'm very glad you have mentioned this tonight. We actually are in the process of trying to formulate a plan.
Thank you.
We actually have, on March 30th of this month.
Yes, I'll be here.
We have a, a public meeting with Carter Representatives. Executive Director will be here. And we are, are going to hear from the public in terms of what kind of public transportation services they would like to see.
Good. I actually posted on my Facebook page about your event so that I would be there and, you know, invite the local people to come. And now I have over two thousand Facebook friends, but they're spread all over the United States and Canada. So it's not like they're in their yards. Thank you, I'm, I'm glad. And this is perfect timing. I called today and they said, well, there's a meeting tonight, I'll be there. And I looked up and then I found that and I said, I'll be there. So this is God's intervention, as far as I see, already laying ahead of me answers to the problem that I'm seeing. And thank you, I appreciate your being there, all very much.
Thank you very much for coming tonight and for mentioning this, sir. We do appreciate it. Do we have another? Yes, sir.
Matthew Biglopper, 70629. I wanted to say a few things about the proposed public records request rules or policy. Um, there's a few, I mean, I know it mostly matches state law, but, but there's a few things that I don't like about it. I guess it's, it doesn't matter because it's state law. But, you know, I, I do think that, number one, this idea of being able to deem people to work in groups or in concerts or request records and then limit them is really ridiculous. I mean, if, if, I mean, if there's a handful of people that do it, I mean, so be it. But I think we should say a lot of four, because on multiple occasions, I've been deemed to be doing that because I happened to put in a similar request about something that is timely as another member of the community. And it was totally not in concert or in connection or any, you know. And, and I was called by the city and said, hey, can you call Person X and just ask them for it? Because we just gave it to them last week. And I have no problem doing that, but, you know, I don't want, you know, who, who deems who's working together or not working. And to me, that just seems ridiculous. And then the other thing is, um, you know, I've, through the course of my business, submitted hundreds of thousands of open records requests, you know, weekly, daily. So, and I've never had anyone tell me that I had to use their specific form. In fact, I don't think you can acquire them. I think if, if they submit a lawful request in writing, it's a lawful request in writing. But, and then, and then the final thing is, um, that I understand that Tennessee laws specifically says that records shall be provided to citizens. But it, it doesn't necessarily directly exclude non-citizens. And I think that, you know, I, I know that's a court, a court issue and the Supreme Court has dealt with that a little bit. But, um, I, I think in Eastridge, we do allow people who own property to vote. So maybe we should at least allow people who own property to submit an open record request. I'm just saying for the state of transparency. And then the final thing is, um, I, I don't think, I think that there should be a specific exclusion to the rules, to people who are, um, members of the media or who are doing it or who are requesting records for public consumption, because, you know, if, if somebody who's a beat reporter in Eastridge has to submit a records request because a incident report wasn't put into the police lobby in a timely manner, you know, and now they're limited to four or required to, to pay an extraordinary amount, I'm just thinking that, you know, unless they submit a request that is, that is very costly to the taxpayers, that if it's for the sake of, of something that the media is trying to do, um, we, we should encourage that where we can, you know, e- even if it is to uncover something that, you know, we wouldn't want necessarily exposed. But, but just for the sake of, you know, public oversight. But those are just a few, those are just a few issues I have with it. I mean, I don't, it's mostly just state law regurgitated, but with a few things for us. So i- if, if you could think about making those slight alterations, I think it'd be better and it would speak more to the transparency of this body. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have another? I spoke with someone earlier about something and I'm not forgetting it. I will mention it in just a minute when we do Citizen Communication. They just give you hints, like, we will do it, we will do it for sure. I don't see any other citizens who have anything to, to mention, so we'll start with Ms. Hilton. You have the communication. Mr. Williams.
I am alone.
Mr. Sewell. Go ahead with it. Okay, Mr. Cagle.
Yes, sir. I've got one here that I want to, well, that's top of the, probably the chief of private, that is the... And then my next one is, everybody sees the lady walking down Hopper 70 with the big black dog. Down at the corner of Ely, Hopper 70, I think that is probably eighteen oh one or eighteen oh three or seven. But anyway, he has some pit bulls. She walks by there, those dogs are loose running around the yard and they charge the feds. And she said the other night, they had come through once by a feds and she kicked it and he went back into the yard. So I know we've got a leash on them. Is fence considered a leash for dogs along their own side of the fence? Or inside of that fence, do they have to have a leash on them?
Fence is a barrier. As long as they're fenced in with, within property, they have a right to, in the backyard. When they're on public property, streets, sidewalks, parks, they have to have a leash.
But she said that, she called the animal shelter before she did move in, like, except for his operator.
I'll check it.
Thank you, sir.
One other thought.
Yes.
Not let her buy my wife. Fifty-one years ago, this Sunday, we were married.
Well, congratulations. You don't look old enough to have been married fifty-one years. Well, congratulations. You both have absolutely, it's a wonderful day. All right, the only thing that I had, um... For those who are interested, actually, I have two things. For those who are interested, there is going to be a roundtable discussion regarding the state of higher education in Tennessee, Wednesday, March 29th, at the Chatham State, the Albright Omniflex Building from one to three. And, um, I believe it is open to the public. Anyway, if you're interested in hearing community business leaders, local officials talk about the, the local higher education landscape, if they want to, uh, check that out. March 29th. It's a Wednesday, that'd be from one to three at Chatham State. And the other thing I had is something that we had mentioned a couple of times before. And that would be a matter of signage. Would be a banner, there'd be actual signs that will, um, encourage people not to litter. Though we talked about that, keep, something that could, you know, keep Eastridge clean or take pride in Eastridge or something to that effect. Yeah, I think we talked about it back in 2015 and talked about it some more in 2016 and just never, never got that. So I would, would love to see that, that happen. If it's, like I said, if it's a banner somewhere on Regal Road, that's great. If it's actual signage that we could put up, that would be, that would be great, too. Just something, uh, it's sad, it's something that should be obvious to everyone. Remember the old Tennessee trash commercial? You know, it should be very, very obvious. But, like a lot of things, we have to do, do things, put up reminders, make laws that keep people between the lines. And, uh, so I, I, I would love to see this, this happen again because we're gonna get into a, a new phase in the, the life of the City of Eastridge. I think we are, we are changing, we are transforming. And we're, we're placing a great emphasis on beautifying our city. We're, we're talking about, you know, multimodal projects. We're gonna put streetscaping on Regal Road. We're talking about tonight on the agenda, we've got the Gateway Beautification Project that we're gonna talk about. And this is a piece of that. No litter, just no litter. Don't be lazy. Wait until you can find a garbage can, put your litter in a garbage. But again, anything that we can do in regard to that would be greatly appreciated by me personally and, and members of the community.
Very well, yes, having one sign made it like our neighborhood, orange signs attached to each stop sign if we got out of here.
That could be like putting the sign beneath the red octagon. I, I don't know, uh, that would be a question we could ask our...
Yeah, I'd have to check a little again. I know what speed limit signs you can, like stop signs and, or what regulatory signs you can. You then know the answer to that. You'd have to touch it, like, you know.
Request, if you stop signs, because you're stopping in front of it.
That's right. If you've got more time to actually read it, that's right, that's right. All right. Get down off the soapbox. All right. Two minutes, do you have anything for us?
I have nothing.
Okay. With that, we will move into old business, and that would be board appointments. We have a list that should have been at everyone's spot up here on the dais. Vacancies and terms that have recently expired and, and people that believe they need to be reappointed or new appointees selected. First page is the beer board, and that, the only vacant slot is my appointee. And I spoke with him earlier, there he is. Earl Wilson would be in your... Okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes, sir? Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Earl Wilson would be my appointee. Yes, and the term would run through, uh, it would actually be to complete the term of my previous appointee resigned, so he will serve through November 27th of 2017 and then the potential for reappointment at that point. The next page will be library board appointees. And there are two individuals who have terms that are up. Those would be appointees from Councilmember Cagle and Councilmember Williams.
How do you have this with Cal, our...
Okay.
Our secretary, I just pointed her back to us.
Okay, that'll be fine. All right.
Excuse me, I'd like to appoint David Witt for our board.
W Y T T.
W Y T T.
Thank you, the, the, the...
W Y T T.
W Y T T.
That term, I believe, based on the pattern here, is going to be through nineteen?
Twelve, thirty-four, nineteen.
Twelve, thirty-one, nineteen. Okay, the personnel board would be the next grouping. And we've kicked this one all over the sandlot, I believe. I think at some point, the, the city manager, he's, you're gonna roll out the new...
We're gonna roll out the, yes, we've had, uh, we have a draft on this, it's being reviewed by the city attorney, Twichford. We also have MTS, uh, through the municipal league, council municipal league, that's working with us, meeting with them next week on their specialist personnel advocate through this, the suggestions they may have. So it'll be shortly coming before the city council. Personnel board will be part of that, a great procedure we can discuss at that time.
So at this point, we're just gonna sit tight on the personnel board. With the, the understanding that it will, it will come back to us before too much longer. It looks like the housing commission, because we just did that last year, they're all in place for three years. So that'll be through August, end of August, 2019. Assembly Appeals Board likewise will run into 2019, April. Looks like every slot is filled there. The planning commission, we have four slots filled. The fifth slot, I spoke with Ann Pruitt on Monday this week. And she is having surgery next week. Based on how that goes, she may be able to continue. We're in a little bit of flux there. And there's a very real possibility that I will, I will step away from that board and may may resign. Just because I've been there long enough. So, um, so we'll see, uh, those things. We have four, four members. Certainly, that's, that's enough to conduct business, four members for sure. And again, with the high hopes that Ann will be able to come back, but we will, we will have to wait and see. Industrial Development Board, there is one position that was appointed by council, so we will need to reappoint or look at a different individual to serve in that position. Mac Pendley has held that position, expires, or actually did expire last year. And I have not spoken with Mac about this, so I don't know if he's willing to continue on or not. So we will need to, to reach out to him and, and see. Now, of course, if council wants to go a different direction, certainly, that's, that's an available option, too. And that looks like it is it. It's all of the... All of the board slots, quite a few of them.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I thought it was gonna be like here, three years or so. Everything except personnel board, so could we just make that a three-year term?
I think we could. It depends on, we would, we might have to go back and revise the ordinance that created it to begin with. We might have to go back and revise the ordinance that created it to begin with. But yes, that's certainly an option.
You know, it's our factory, it's our...
All right. Go through the board appointments. There'll be, again, additional discussion as we go along in the future, but for right now, we have motion that handled. So we can move on to new business. Item A is the public hearing for ordinance number 1029. And Mr. Litchford, if you wouldn't mind reading the caption for ordinance 1029.
An ordinance, the city council, the city of East Ridge, to the city to amend the East Ridge zoning ordinance, ordinance number 481, codified in Title 14, Chapter 2 of the East Ridge Municipal Code by inserting a new section labeled Article 10, Architectural Design Standards and Guidelines to the East Ridge Zoning Ordinance adopting architectural design standards and guidelines within commercial zone districts in the city.
Okay. So we will, having properly advertised this public hearing, we will open the hearing to any comments that... That any citizen, business owner in the city of East Ridge would like to make. I believe Kenny Custer is going to be able to answer some questions and go over the content of this particular ordinance. But if there is anyone who has a question or comment at this juncture, certainly, you are welcome to ask it. It's kind of the same rules for the citizen communication portion of the meeting. You'll come to one of the two microphones here at the front and state your name and address for the record. You'll have up to five minutes. Okay. See none at this time, but I will... Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I'd just like to make a general comment.
Yes, sir.
Is this really necessary? I mean, business has so many regulations, there's so much red tape, that businesses are discouraged from coming here or any other place in the United States. So how important is this, or is it just another hurdle for people? Is it worth the red tape as long?
Thank you, sir. And I'm sorry. Well, sir, hold. What was your name on first line?
My name is... Hurdly Ogden, 1143 2111. That's good.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Okay. Kenny, would you like to address that?
Sure. I would like to say that we did a brief introduction on this just a few days ago, but since that time, we have had two developers present a new developer and what it's going to look like. And it actually exceeds what our design standards are there for. These are basic design standards if we're looking at. We're not... I don't feel that we're going over the top, but we already have... If you look at the Walmart, that meets the majority of the design standards. If you look at the Speedway that was built, that's the design standards. It's nothing that we feel that's overreaching or over... So we've not seen that, that it's caused an issue with it's somebody who stood out totally against it. We're just trying to enhance the city moving forward. We're not trying to look like, you know, certain cities where everything has to be the same color. We just want to have good quality building materials. That way, it lasts for a long time, and we can beautify our city.
Is there anyone else? At this time, I will ask Kenny just to... Is there any kind of overview that you would like to provide, or would you rather wait for the actual consideration of the ordinance? It's whatever your pleasure.
Okay. Just a little background. First of all, it's great to have a second ordinance coming through after the sign ordinance. The sign ordinance was passed. This time, it's our sign ordinance with the overall look. So it's a wonderful feeling to know that I feel that the city is moving forward. We're getting a lot of positive feedback on what we're doing. Planning commission met, went back through the changes. This was up for first reading about a month ago. We took it back because we needed some to change administrative features, and that was going to be primarily for the developer or the owner of the property to go through the appeal process if they didn't totally or felt aggrieved by one of the requirements in the ordinance. So we made a few changes, and I'll go through some of the municipal changes that we had, and then I'll pass it on to Mr. Litchford, because him and I have worked together on this, and let him go through more of the legality. If you'll notice in your packets, it should all be highlighted, the changes that were made. We really did a presentation on this at the same time that we did the sign ordinance. The only difference in the look is this is in ordinance versus the original presentation. I'll cover our goals. The number one goal is to encourage high-quality buildings that are on a sign visually interesting and heads to city securities. We want to be able to support active pedestrian-oriented public space throughout the city's business framework and reflect the goals of city council in creating development and greater quality in particular in architectural stocks. We want to be consistent on the way that our codes are written for remodels and upgrades. This is primarily for new construction, but if you have a damaged building or if you're coming in to do a rehab and you meet that 50% threshold, which is commonly found in all our homes, even including our recent lead-up to sign ordinance, that you hit that 50% threshold that could trigger into these design standards to approach. One of the other changes that was presented to the planning commission was the exterior of all facade shall apply to each side of the structure that is visible to the public. There was some discussion back and forth about depending on the type of building you build, you know, I'll use the trade name Butler Building. Would it just have to be the facade on the front side or two sides? And then, but if you're a resident and it abords, joins a residential district, you want to be looking at a nice facade as well. So that's why that was added in there to basically shore that up so there's no question on what we're trying to achieve. We added some more materials or an additional material, limited accents, fiberglass siding, hard planks, commonly used. That was an addition to acceptable materials. Colors have been something that's been brought to council numerous times, and it's come through our office numerous times. So we wanted to make sure that we were able to keep that with an earth tone or neutral colors. And even though it says encouraged, we didn't feel like we had to be too specific on that simply because the subsection C says bright, intense, or fluorescent colors are prohibited. I believe one of the last major additions that we put, that was added between the last council meeting and the planning commission that was recently approved was proof manual mechanical air conditioning equipment shall be screened for public view on all sides of adjacent streets and adjoining developments by use of parrots, walkers, or other means. And that's just to basically give an aesthetic view, so you're not looking just at rooftop mechanical equipment. Sometimes that can be difficult based on topography. If you live on the other end of East Ridge, near the tunnels, and you're a residential property that's much higher than what the commercial development is, you're still going to see that, but we'll try to provide screen in the design.
I have a question. Are these for new buildings being put in or renovations or existing buildings or all of them?
So primarily, this is new development. Unless the construction of building permit is pulled, that's going to get 50% increase. So if they're going to, you know, give 50% more work. And these are some of the photographs, just to give an idea of missing exactly the examples, but it does leave some illustration for you to understand what we're looking at and what we're talking about, an architectural design standard and a look that we're going to want.
I would like to mention, too, this could be a good opportunity to do so, that a lot of the chains, whether they be regional or national chains, have brick facades in their plan packages, that basically they could, if they come to a particular market, they could build something that's all brick, but if there are not design standards in place, they may go with the cheapest thing they have in their package. And we see an example of that. I'll give you one right here. I won't name the name, but there is a national retailer who built a building here about two years ago. It's a Butler Building. They also built a store over on Shalton Road, close to the mall, and it is complete brick facade with modern design. And, you know, we get the Butler Building because we didn't have design standards in place.
And that was... And that comes up in town meetings. They ask, you know, what's your design standards? What are you looking for? What do you need? And if you don't have anything in place, then it's fair game. They can build pretty much anything they want, aesthetic. Well, another retailer, we may be talking about the same one, just completed a brand-new store in downtown Reno, and it is brick on four sides. And we have the Butler Building. So this is just to really enhance the city moving forward. Again, another illustration. Mr. Litchford, would you like to cover the administration of appeals and variances?
In connection with taking this back to planning commission from the previous time that it appeared, the discussion came about as to the appeal process and what a applicant would really have to follow, because it really just talked about it just there was an appeal. The applicant could appeal, and we felt that that sort of put an applicant at a disadvantage just by telling them they had an appeal. What did they have to appeal? What did they have to... What form took? And what were some of the standards in connection with an appeal? So what we did, we went back, and if you'll look, you can sort of go down on pages nine and 10 of your handout, but we added what we believe to be a good balance of a process between applicant and getting a standards enforced, at least with regard to the design review committee. So we went and... Go up just a little bit, Mr. Custer. Okay. So we have the board, as adoption of this, will form a East Ridge Design Review Committee made up of three individuals, city manager, chief building official, and building inspector. And those three will have equal vote on decisions in connection with the architectural design standards. Any applicant that feels that they're rigged by a decision or that a decision was made in error as to the standards, then has the right to appeal that. And where we put it here is they would have a right to appeal within 10 days by submitting in writing an appeal to the staff of East Ridge City Council. Upon that appeal, then it would be taken up by the city council. We put in those details, put in the section C, just scroll down. You'll see that we have the requirements of what would be incorporated into an appeal, which would be the decision to be appealed from and a description of the appeal. And from there, that gives the city council an opportunity to evaluate what is the applicant deeming as the aggrieved decision in connection with the design committee, and what is the actual issue being appealed from. And once that appeal has been submitted, it would be circulated to the council for the next available hearing date. And we wanted to go ahead and put it as the next available. We don't want our applicant sitting around wondering, when is our appeal going to be heard? Originally, there was no deadline. As it was written, it could have been appealed with indefinite time. We wanted to give the applicant an opportunity to have some sort of expectancy and predictability as to when it would be heard. So there would be an appeal filed within 10 days, and on the next regularly available city council meeting, then they would have a hearing as to the appeal with regard to the design committee decision. We have put in here that the options of city council, they can affirm it, they can reverse it, they can remand it back, or they can modify. So that gives the city council a lot of flexibility and an opportunity for the applicant to come forward in the public hearing and express his or her position as to the appeal. And the council has the flexibility to, if they hear it, they may want to remand it back, remand it back with instructions, remand it back for further consideration or reevaluation by the design committee. And so we wanted to make sure that everybody with regard to an applicant coming forward had every opportunity as to what they're going to be appealing and as to what they can expect from a council with regard to a decision. In addition to whether or not an applicant thinks that they've been aggrieved, we also have, we instituted a process for variance. And we wanted the applicants to be able to, I think, one of the public discussions we had here is we don't want the idea is not to make this a hindrance on future development in the commercial districts of the city. So we provided a process for variance to be applied for. And it's not an effort to try to add an extra restriction on there. Rather, it's to give the applicant an opportunity to express what exactly the variance is needed and to allow for a process to go forward to determine appropriateness of the variance being sought by the applicant. In connection with the variance, we have kind of guidelines there as to what some of the considerations are. When you're looking at a variance generally, your issue is what sort of unnecessary hardship is going to be placed upon an applicant? So we wanted to provide some guidance to the applicant so that they've got additional predictability as to what they can expect and what the council would consider with regard to an applicant seeking a variance from these standards. Last thing, section 112. We felt it was important that we get some level of finality as to a decision of a design committee and or the city council. Once an approval has been issued, then there is a period at which it's valid, and that's going to be for six months following the date of the design review committee's approval, or if the work on the project is not commenced or completed, then within the time period prescribed, an issued building permit. And that was really to encourage an applicant coming forward, to allow them to get moving, to construct the development that they're proposing that would otherwise be approved under the new standards being proposed here. There is also extension. We didn't want to just lock people in, so they found a 60-day extension, and that can be provided by the review committee upon request. And once there's an expiration, then you would have, you should file with the correct custodian a notice of noncompliance, and in the failure of this, you're required to have to go through and do the process again. What we wanted to eliminate was just someone getting an approval and getting never acted upon, and maybe two or three years later, people want to, what happened? What went on here? And we wanted it to be, as we say, some institutional knowledge gets lost in time. This was a way to ensure that the applicant has a plan, it's approved, and that the city has some knowledge as to what's being constructed out there and that it's actually being fulfilled.
So that is an overview of the revisions to these design standards. Council, do you have any questions? Council, do you have any questions?
Okay, may I have one?
Sure.
In the section 106, we discussed mainly mechanical and air conditioning equipment screening from public views. If we consider, I mean, they are not on roof, make them remain in front or inside view with your ground, or anything visible from the front?
Call it out, please, for roof.
Right. I don't believe it's throughout, it's just for roof maintenance, because you're, because what we're seeing for this is generally commercial and, um, large retail, and that's what it's going to be. So it's very common.
Okay.
If you're looking for revision, it's something that can be adjusted, let alone.
I think what you might be looking for is some kind of regulation that says that you can't put a unit in front of the building, you have to be pushed to either the side or the rear, if it's not roof mounted. Some of the small buildings out there would have AC units either the rear or the side. You don't want it in front.
No, absolutely. And we could also have the variance that you're requiring, we use that for security purposes also.
Okay, are there any other questions? Is he done? So we'll close the public hearing. And move to consideration of ordinance 1029 on first reading. Again, this requires two readings, so first will be tonight, the second reading will be April thirteenth. Do we have a motion in regard to item 9B, ordinance number 1029? Motion, do we have a second?
Second motion.
We have a second. Yes, sir.
Maybe a point regarding second reading, it's a lot of the, the design plan, they put a lot of this, like, it's a little bit.
This doesn't become effective until the second reading. We did not have zoning in progress ordinance. You'd have to, like, the city may want to consider a zoning in progress ordinance, which basically means anything that comes up touching on zoning at the time it's brought up at the meeting, and no applicant can, can file until that issue is either resolved, adopted, or dropped.
I want to believe that.
No, you have to have an ordinance. On, you have to develop, you have to draft an ordinance and adopt an ordinance called zoning in progress.
That's what we're saying. They're right. By the time we get that done, this, this will be resolved, potentially. Do we have any questions? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sulu?
Yes.
Councilmember Haggel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Item is approved. Move on to item C, ordinance number 1030, which is the one that the city manager has that we tabled. This is in regard to sanitation.
Yes.
May the motion be tabled?
Have a motion to table, do we have a second? Second. We have our second. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sulu?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Haggel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Now, item is tabled. Item D, resolution 2633.
A resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge to the city authorizing the city manager for his designated executive contract with Henderson, Hutcheson, and McCullough, P L L C for auditing services as required by the state agency and other regulatory agencies.
The total on that's going to be twenty-six thousand nine hundred dollars.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion? In regard to this?
Motion to approve, twenty-six thousand and thirty-four.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second motion.
Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sulu?
Yes.
Councilmember Haggel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Item E, resolution 2634.
A resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge to the city adopting a public records policy for the city of East Ridge.
Motion through. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. I did have a question, Janet, or Tom.
On this?
Yes. So, I mean, she's not here, so she, I don't know if she's got the answers or someone else does. Our proposed policy is basically the model policy that the state provided. Okay. So we essentially plugged in the information that pertained to us.
We did, and it adds some clarification, easier to follow, we, we felt that, uh, we, our position was that we were trying to make this easier for citizens of East Ridge to be able to spotlight. Got, namely, uh, fine, we're, section B of 3B, section 3B, under a title of 3, or 3, it said, responding to public records, we wanted it to be clear under section B, 3B, just that two, three options is included, a request can be spelled within seven days.
Motion. Okay. And this, just to give a tiny bit of background on this, the state comptroller has kindly requested that all cities adopt a, uh, a public records, open records policy by July 1st, I think, this year. So, all cities will be doing this in some way or another. They provided a model policy for cities to consider, and so, that's going to make up the majority of what our policy is. Okay, are there any questions? We do have a motion and a second to approve. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sulu?
Yes.
Councilmember Haggel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Item F, the grant consent agenda, made up of resolutions 2635, 2636, 2637, and 2638. Yes, you can be with that.
A resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee approving the application for and acceptance of fiscal year 2017 Tennessee Department of Transportation's Tennessee Highway Safety Office Grant, resolution 2636. A resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee authorizing the city of East Ridge Police Department to apply for and accept the Walmart Foundation Community Grant, 2637. A resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee approving the application for and acceptance of the Tennessee Three Star Grant Program, 2638. A resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee approving the application for and acceptance of the 2017, 2018 Tennessee Aquatic Stream Cleanup Grant.
Okay, do we have a motion? My motion to approve, uh, grant consent agenda. We have a motion and a second. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
On the Tennessee Highway Safety Grant, the matter presented by J.R. Reid, he wants to add two police officers for vehicle and needed train. And over here in the, uh, resolutions, it's about $250,000 for body cameras, so which are we going to do?
Chief?
Well, 26, uh, 2635, I'm not sure how that got blended in with the, uh, the application for this, this particular 2017 Highway Safety Grant, because, uh, what I learned from, uh, agenda memorandum on was the, uh, the creation of a traffic unit for this, for this grant.
Plus, apparently, approximately $250,000 for body cameras should be out. We're leaving in for $250,000 for two police officers complete, that would be our traffic unit grant.
Is the resolution going to be corrected?
It needs to be corrected. It needs the body camera units have to be taken out. If you take out the body cameras, you save approximately $250,000 for police officers, put down four, two police officers. Uh, we certainly would accept three if we could get them.
Yeah, it is.
So, uh, we put down police officers. Usually, if you put in for four, so you're going to get half of what you, you request because these highway, these state highway traffic grants are very competitive.
I'd rather have a traffic department say that's.
I, yeah, I'm pushing for that. Yes.
Resolution, throw the policy forward.
Right.
Would you like to move to amend resolution 2635?
Yes, sir. Make several for us tonight. Change the resolution to read as the memorandum, that we're going to be trying to create a, a traffic division, add two police officers, vehicle, and needed train, with $250,000 grant. And that's a nonaction grant.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion to amend, do we have a second? Second. We have a second. If we could have a roll call on the amendment.
Vice Mayor Sulu?
Yes.
Councilmember Haggel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
So now, if there are, if there are additional questions? Okay, sure.
Walmart grant for $1,900. Did he get a price on the local paid to pay for a leader, said $1,900, what, covered the cost of it?
The cost of it, or it's just a touch less than $1,900. Like $1,800 or $200 or something like that, eighty-nine. So we do have a motion and a second to approve the grant consent agenda now as amended. If we can have the roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sulu?
Yes.
Councilmember Haggel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Thank you. Item G, discussion, take action on financial assistance to new development at the Southwest Corner of Truman and Ringo Road.
Okay. My office was approached, uh, earlier this year by Mr. Sumas Patel, Jake Patel, I know Mr. Patel's here tonight, to respond to any questions you may have of him. Now, he acquired a two-story office building at the Southwest Corner of Truman and Ringo Road, if you notice, that building's no longer there, it's been taken to the ground. He also acquired the lot, the residential lot behind there, which is about .35, .36 acres. So by taking the, the Southwest Corner and the residential lot behind, those two lots will be joined to approximately .75 acres. Uh, he's looking to, uh, relocate the house further down the street on empty lot, and then also constructing, he's changed the square footage from seven and sixty-five-hundred square foot building to location of five retail businesses. Two restaurants, one of those, Marcus Pizza, and three retail stores. He's working with retail strategies, uh, our marketing firm at this time to attempt to bring in, uh, sales vendors for retails for the, uh, other, for units. He's requesting financial assistance in the amount of $1 million, payable in increments of $50,000 per year for 20 years, along with a one-time payment in the amount of $31,000. But I want to, this is within the border region district, and as such, all retail sales generated from these five stores, the 4.2 cents per dollar that usually would go to the state, now comes back to the city of East Ridge. Since there was not a retail store there previously, the full store, now we hit 100% of the retail sales, both at our 1.125% local option sales tax, plus the 4.2 cents, which would be the state taxes, where they pay, everybody pays seven, seven cents, uh, on sale in the city. Uh, we, we, we made it back 4.2 cents on the dollar. When we computed their, what page is it? We computed their anticipated sales for these five tenants. We came up with a total over 20 years of $3,263,609 in border region sales tax that were repaid back to the city of East Ridge. On top of that, the local option sales tax generated, we had never received local option sales tax from anything in that quarter before, because it was service, generated another As far as the new buildings are concerned, from the present, well, I should say the previous, because one building has been torn down and the house will be relocated, but the increment in the property tax from the old to the new will generate an additional $243,300 over 20 years. So when you look at it, all three of these revenue stream, revenue sources together, you wind up with $4,381,090.83. We're providing him a financial assistance package of $1 million, which will be payable, $50,000 a year for 20 years. The net proceeds to the city will be around $3.38 million over a 20-year period. He's also asking for a $31,000 one-time payment. That amount represents the difference between the bank's appraisal of the property and the sale of that property. The bank had it appraised at 94, and sold the property to 125. I'm recommending that the city would appropriate that dollars to him, coming out of the city's fund balance, we will get more than that $31,000 back over the next several years. There will be a condition to that, you want to have second mortgages put on parcel of properties so that we're guaranteed that, uh, we get something back for $31,000 in case he decides he doesn't want to build, I've got something that's worth more than $31,000 in cash to get my money back. When we work this, term sheet on this.
Sorry, please bear with me. I have a thing in front of me.
Over the next 20 years, in order to obtain the $50,000 appropriation that he would be entitled to, he has to have, that those five stores has to generate a minimum of $1,190,476 in sales a year. If, if by chance, 10 years from now, several of those stores are vacant, sales drops below $1,190,476, so does his appropriation from the city of $50,000. It would be prorated downward. So there is a condition there to the developer that he or she must maintain in-house sales out of those five stores at 1.125 for the next 20 years. That's per year. If he drops, he loses money on the $50,000. However, on the other hand, too, if he gains more, that's good for the city. He's only gets $50,000. So the total financial assistance that's being provided him is $1 million over 20 years with an upfront of $31,000. I think I've covered everything. Mr. Patel, is there anything that you wish to add? I think he's ready to start pretty soon. He closes on a house in the middle of this month. And once the house is relocated, he's set to go in there and start construction. He wants to have this up and running midsummer, maybe fall, early fall?
Yes.
Okay. I would entertain any questions anybody has.
Yes, sir. The presentation I've had, I thought you were saying, one of the 7,000 square foot. He presented all these numbers. These numbers change according to. The property tax went down.
I'm sorry, the property tax is going to go down?
Yeah, you have here that.
No, his construction, his construction costs are still the same.
I'm talking about the property tax that will be collected from year to year to year to year. Okay, so I took that 7,000 square foot. By the end, what you told me was the property tax here, they come up, the property tax come to a difference between 7,000 and 6,500, you need $201. I mean, $201 square foot. Property taxes be. Says that, so to make the long story short, we're going to end up with over that year, be over 20 years, it'll be $20,121 in property taxes.
How can you lose on property taxes? Would you have old buildings that are valued?
It's going to watch your.
No, but I'm. My motion is to, I'm going with what I put down on paper.
I'm going with that?
Yeah. On the yellow sheet?
I think.
See, you building 7,000 square feet.
I think the rub here is whether the building, the final building is going to be 7,000 square feet or 6,500 square feet. Is that, is that the crux of the?
What property tax is going to be taken off 6,500 square foot versus 7,000 square foot?
Yeah, but what you.
I may have wrong place off the 7,000 square foot.
Okay, but if you discounted that slightly, your assessed value for a 7,000 square foot building is $990,000, correct? Your assessed value now, that was before he tore it down, was $133,000. I don't think you could see much of the difference between $133,000 assessed valuation and $990,000. Even if you took the building from 7,6500 and gave the benefit of the doubt and knocked $100,000 off the assessed valuation, you look at it, $880,000 with the new building and $137,000 assessed with the old. The difference there is still going to be substantial. Over $600,000 times your mortgage rate. You're not losing money on the property tax.
So the old building property tax we collected here was $1,607?
Yes, sir.
And you're stating that the new building will be $48,000, $84?
At 7,000, if you want to reduce that.
At 7,000 square foot.
At 7,000, yes.
So these numbers.
If it winds up being 6,500, you can reduce that property tax number a little bit.
You're still looking at, yeah, if you took, yeah, exactly, your assessed value goes, your assessed value of the building goes down. I discounted the building not 10%, if you notice over there in the 90. So if you, if you took that value down and the assessed value went down, let's say even $800,000, you knocked off $190,000 for 500 square feet. You're still ahead of the game when you subtract out $137,000, multiply that difference of $500,000 times your mortgage rate of 1.4227, you're still going to end up without $200,000 to the good.
I think, one of the things I would like to kind of highlight, because I know not everyone, even though we we feel like we talk about it all the time, I know not everyone may understand the details of the border region legislation. City of East Ridge is one of two or three cities, actually three, but only one of two that have an active border region district in which the state is willing to incentivize retail development. What they will do is, if you have a piece of property that either was not producing sales tax or is producing little sales tax, and you do something on that piece of property that increases the sales tax generation, the state will give 75% of its share of that increase.
Less the school appropriation.
Less the school appropriation. So it's, it works out to about 4.2 cents on every dollar. They give it back to the city potentially to provide incentives or to reimburse the city for incentives it has already provided or construction, other eligible costs that it has incurred within the district. So basically, the big number to look at here, that piece of property was a real estate office in 2012, producing zero sales tax. Potentially, over 20 years, it can produce $3.2 billion in sales tax with a new development. And so that is potentially state money that will come back to the city of East Ridge. And from that state money is where the million dollars for the incentive is coming from. In addition to that, we get $874,000 in local option sales tax that we have not been getting previously. And $243,300 in property tax.
Yeah, if you brought the assessed value down to $800,000, $800,000 you're looking at, instead of generating $243, you're generating $227,000. So really, we're not touching the property tax. We're not touching the 1.125%. What we are providing, Mr. Patel, developer, is possibly 30% of the border region state tax dollars that will be rebated back to the city over 20 years. His first year out of five tenants, he's projecting $2.3 million in sales. And I mentioned before that he has to clear at least $1.14 million to get to $50,000. So that's, that's his projections, even if they don't reach $2.3 million. We know that he is at least attainable to get to the $1,41,000. If he doesn't get that, then the $50,000 is ratcheted downward.
So this is potentially the third incentive deal that, well, the counting the triggering event, which was the Bass Pro development, and then the recent Dunkin' Donuts developer deal, this will be the third one. Do we have any questions, Kendall?
Yeah, I have one more.
Yes, sir.
The Bass Pro, Mr. Tarshakini, or property owner Mr. Tarshakini?
Yes, sir.
Before the second project, the third project, you ever started drawing it out? And they had business this one. He has to. So it has to be $10 million, better million, $190,476 dollars before he can get his 30% more prorated basis grant. Right now, the same thing with the other. They have to get through one million, whatever it is, to get through the third. What if we come into downgrade the economy? And then we barely have enough to make the $10 million, but then we have left over the $10 million. How are we necessarily to these, take Bass Pro, Bass Pro, or we are going to pay which one, Matt, or I have to, they give them their 30%?
I talked to Mark Bamitoff, I hold it today, talked to Stacey on that. Number one, we are committed, and in the term sheet we do have language and in the development group, we will have language that basically said, says that our first order of business is to pay $10 million, exactly $431,000 a year, that we pay Bass Pro, or we pay, I'm sorry, X and Y LLC. $413,000 a year, we're obligated, or do anything now. If we don't collect any more than $413,000, because of the downturn, we pay $413,000, we scrape our pennies together, we pay X and Y, $431, everybody else under the development group, they get nothing, zebra. If, for example, we had extra money left over, let's say we did $500,000, $413,000 goes to X and Y LLC, and a difference there of $77,000, $87,000, I'm sorry, $87,000 would be distributed on a prorated basis to how many agreements that we have. Right now, we have two. So we distribute it to them. If we don't have, we can't, one of them's a $30,000 here, this one's a $80,000. If we don't have enough money to pay for both, both of them, then both of them would get less than that on a prorated basis. Reiterate to me that that's how it works.
So if not, if we don't pay them nothing, if we pay them the first two years, then these 18 years left on contract, then next year comes up, we don't pay them nothing, does that come up, give them 18 more years?
No.
Or does it stop at 20 total?
Stops at 20 total, and if they don't get any, if they don't get, if by chance we were to incur another 2,008, not 1,000, if we don't ever do that again, we spend a lot of lifetime. And sales tax really took a nosedive. We would have to pay the $413. If they weren't able to pay them for five years, and all of a sudden, the economy started ratcheting up, we pay them as we can afford to pay the money. If they're to pay them, if the money's not there, we don't pay them. If we don't pay them for years 10, 11, and 12, that doesn't mean they get that money paid back in '13, '14, and '15. That's it. It's $30,000 or $50,000 per year for both of these individuals, both these individual businesses. And that's the worst-case scenario that we have, but none of us thought that 2,007, 2,008 was going to happen. That's a good question, though. And if we're writing that language right now, means the development agreement, to make it crystal clear.
Yeah.
This is just the term of the agreement, the development agreement. We're putting more wording in there because I want, I'm not going to be here on 20 years, I'll be, black people walking on earth for 20 years. But I want everybody in the future to understand 10, 15 years from now, make it crystal clear that this is how this works. I know how it works, but sometimes the butcher, the messers down in legal leagues. I rely on my attorneys to be able to do that. So we got two of them working on it right now.
That was my question as well, Steve. This 1.19 is going to be embedded into the agreement? Because it's not in the term sheet?
No, it will not be, it will not be in the agreement. Because the 1.125 basically figures, can be figured out exactly what the sales tax was generated on. Well, this one you probably could, because there was no base here.
Correct.
Okay. We may have examples, but this is basically the way it's worded. I just don't want a different interpretation.
But to continue to receive the $50,000, they need to meet themselves.
Yes. $50,000, if you take a $50,000, divide that by 4.2%, Bass Pro, you're going to get it, it's $1,919.
Because $50,000 is your yearly.
That's your yearly appropriation.
But it's based on generating a lot of sales?
No, it's $50,000, and they will get $50,000.
I understand that.
Under, under years, not predicated, if it go, if it drops below 1.125, they get less. That language is included.
It is included, okay.
Yes, sir. On 3C, second to the last paragraph. One of the allocated sales tax revenue in a year is sufficient to pay the annual incentive. The shortfall shall be payable in a future year, which incremental sales is required of our fees.
Right, so it is C, a dollar figure, just an incentive.
I'm sorry, I'm, it's B. If the allocated state sales tax revenue in a year that are derived from sales in the domain are less than the annual incentive, the amount paid to the developer shall be limited to the amount so derived from the property. We need to meet that, like some of the ones that we're working on right now.
Because I'm often doing incentive, absolutely. Those are one of the protectors of.
Right.
What a distro they could think about, that, you know, a recession is certainly possible, even a significant recession. But, you know, a lot of this conversation, what's been mentioned, is making the assumption that if there is a recession, the business in question is not hit by the recession. You know, who's to say that they, that they don't take a pretty good shot, too, in terms of their own sales tax generation, that they don't make the benchmark because of a recession? And so, you know, if we get hit district-wide with a recession, it's not necessarily going to spare the Dunkin' Donuts or the Marcos Pizza. They may feel the hurt, too. They may not reach the benchmark to begin with. So they wouldn't earn, earn the incentive anyway. Lots of, lots of different moving parts to that. But, again, essentially, the one billion dollar incentive, $50,000 a year for 20 years, is again, coming from the state's money that they're making available to us to incentivize development.
Right, and then we will get the balance of that border region tax, but the other taxes we will get are the local option sales tax, which we haven't ever got, that location, and the property tax with the increase in the building. We'll take it down to old buildings and building a brand-new building at a lot higher assessed value, so we'll be generating more tax dollars. So we're building our tax base. Here, I mean, you can't really say we're bringing in more jobs, and I'm not sure how many jobs were there in a two-story building that was there previous anyways. So this one will have five businesses.
I agree, not far from there. And someone joked to me the other day that that building has been vacant more often than not since we were kids, riding bikes altered that area. So, you know, it's, it's definitely a positive to see a new, a new building going in there. And I had an opportunity to eat at Marcos Pizza just the other day. It was excellent pizza, I think. It's good for personal sensibilities. Do we have motions? Or any additional questions in regard to this development agreement?
I'd like to approve on that.
Motion to approve, we have a second. We have a second. We have our second. Any additional questions? I will say this did clear the industrial development board on Tuesday.
I forgot to mention that, yes.
Okay.
Our chairman's in the audience and the unanimous, we approved this Tuesday night. I'd also mention, too, that if the council approves it, it goes back to the, to the IDB industrial development board, they negotiate and sign off on the, uh, development agreement.
The final?
Final, yeah.
Right. Okay. Oh, sorry, question?
The thirty-one thousand is gonna come out of your funds?
Yes, sir. Fund balance, then with, then the, the finance director's gonna have to come back and we'll have to make a amendment to the budget, and that'll be done at the next meeting.
Okay. We need the roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Soo?
Yes.
Councilman Haggel?
Yes.
Councilman Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Lanning?
Yes.
Item H, last item on the agenda, discussion or take action with presentation by ASA Engineering, or ASA Engineering regarding Exit One communication project. Gentlemen, I'm sorry for your long wait. Can we take a, take a five-minute break and then we'll give you opportunity to, to set up a,